Get started with the work session tonight. I'd like to get everybody's attention. Our first item on tonight's work session in general will be discussion of Christmas tree-like sponsorships. Rotary Club fundraisers they're proposing. So if I can ask the members of Rotary Club to come sit at the table and we, I think we have a good idea of what you have in mind, but just tell us what's going on.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Jaeger. I'm the secretary for the Fairhope Sunset Rotary. And actually, I did bring, just a brief, if we can pass these around. I think I have enough, just a brief synopsis of what we're proposing, but we, essentially, we're proposing to solicit families, businesses, other organizations to adopt a tree downtown and surrounding streets. And the, each adopting party will have a recognition on the tree, which will reside there between the tree lighting ceremony in November and the last day of the art festival, I believe, in April. So the money's raised would go to a, an organization in Fairhope. We quite often have charities where we raise money and contribute it back into the community. And that's certainly our goal with this one as well. We would, we would like, actually, and I think we've discussed, having a mutual understanding with the city as to which organization would receive the money, so that we're kind of working together with that. I guess at that point, I think we had five minutes, open it up for questions.
So council, from what I know, it's as you described, it's fairly simple concept. You adopt a tree, the money goes to charity. And I don't know that the council wants to start naming charities, because we, you know, we're politicians, we're gonna leave somebody out. So we might, we might just leave that up to you guys and ladies. But, you know, the only thought I had about this, and one reason why I thought the council needed to talk about it, is it's, it is public property. We'd have to give the Sunset Rotary Club permission to use it. And we do that a lot. We do it with the streets, we do it with the parks, we do it for a lot of fundraisers. So that's, that's been done numerous times throughout the year, or is being done numerous times throughout the year. They're discussing putting something around the trees, and I know that it may not be specific yet, but it's something like, you know, picture Beech with a plaque or something that hangs from it, right? So this tree is adopted by the business family or whomever, right? Is that correct?
That's correct. We've had different ideas, and I think I've used the word plaque as well, but I think it's something we've, we've explored, a tighter wrap that's less intrusive to foot traffic and those who would park and get out of their car. So maybe something like a wrap or something a little tighter that would have a name recognition around the tree. That is, quite honestly, hasn't been settled yet, but one thing we're absolutely certain is it's tasteful. It will be aesthetically pleasing with the lights and the trees and the surrounding flowers and things like that, so.
So we've had the, if you remember, the trees that were wrapped in yarn. There was a fundraiser a few years ago that was real successful, and it was a competition, and many of the downtown trees were wrapped in yarn. This probably wouldn't even be that extravagant, but the one thing that you need to be conscious of is the fact that we recently, you know, put out a call to people to stop putting signs and right-of-ways, and the last thing we want to do is be hypocrites and say, "You can't put anything on city property, but, but we can, or we can allow Sunset." My personal opinion is that as long as it's very unobtrusive and tastefully done, it's not the same as putting a big, you know, 18 by 24 sign in a flower bed. So I would hope that the citizens wouldn't look upon us like that if we were to approve this, but I just wanted to make everybody aware that somebody might say that. Any thoughts, council? Any feedback?
I agree. I think anything, anytime we can, you know, do what we can for any charitable organization, we should consider it. And as long as, in this case, it's not, like you said, obtrusive, or, you know, as long as it's tasteful, then I agree. I think it's a, it's a good idea.
Are you looking to do this year by year, or a multi-year contract?
Well, at, at this stage, we are, we're focused on this year. I think we would certainly, with any, any charitable foundation, you have the first year and you expect to grow from that. So I think we would look to try to do this multiple years, certainly. And we're, obviously, we're coming, the, for this year, it's a little tighter timeframe. So we, we would, personally, I would like to see, you know, the, the best effort we can this year, and then make a really good run at it next year to see how much money we can raise for a charity.
Thoughts?
I've got kind of mixed emotions. I, you know, on the surface, I think it's a good idea, but back to the signage, the design of it, you know, how obtrusive is it? You know, is it, is not visible enough, are people gonna redo it, or, you know, what kind of backlash we're gonna get? I mean, I see it taken away from the Christmas lights if we got signs on all the trees, personally.
Well, I'm sorry.
I sent a link about what, it's very, it's just like a necklace-looking thing with the plaque. It's very small. Did you get that?
I did, and that's what I was gonna say, that this is, this is more of a, a wrap tighter to the tree is what we're expecting. And we've, we've, we've tried to avoid signs, just because the first thought is you're hanging something from a tree, someone could hit their head, or it just looks bad.
Right.
And that's not the intent, because in my opinion, the city said it's, it's most beautiful during that season when the trees lit. And so we certainly want to complement that and not take away from it.
Yes, I mean, I'd be happy to see us support a charity and a good organization like Sunset Rotary. My initial thought was that the city might do something like this to help offset some of the cost of, of doing this, and just handle it ourselves, same kind of concept, but, I mean, I'm not opposed to having a.
The original idea was, you know, trying to think of, how can we offset expenses? We cannot, as a city, do those sponsorships, though. So that's what I, you know.
Gotcha. So at least we can generate revenue for charity.
I reached out to, you know, Fairhope Sunset Rotary and gave that idea, that why don't we sponsor the, the trees? But my initial thing was for the Boys and Girls Club, because all the rotaries contribute to Boys and Girls Club, and we own that. I mean, any charitable organization, I think, works, but, you know, that's kind of a main focus of rotaries. All three of them create the Rotary, Boys and Girls Club, and then the city benefits two, twice, because it's a, it's an asset that we already have and own, that y'all run through a board, and would give them just more money to enhance. So that's, that was the original idea.
I'd be in favor of that.
Anyway, this is what the plaque.
Okay, I'm hearing, what am I hearing here? I'm hearing, okay.
I'd support that. Something that the city needs to fund and support anyways, I would, I would be in favor of that.
That's a pretty big plaque.
Yeah, I'd like to see the final design before we approve it.
This is like a plaque like this.
Yeah, okay.
That's a little bitty tree.
Why don't we approve it?
But it would be.
If we could do it and approve it, approve it, like, I mean, I hate getting into a minutia like that, or.
I do, too, but again, it is, you know, the liveliest time of the year in downtown Fairhope.
So would you want to approve it?
I think it's great, because the families or whoever did the sponsorship can take pictures in front of the tree, and it's still beautiful and.
That was kind of, my thought, excuse me, sorry to interrupt, that was kind of the thought, too, is that we congregate more, in my mind, that time of year, anyway, and that's kind of nice. I've always thought of, you know, with, with our business, if we had one, you know, my friends and family that come down, like, hey, let's go by the tree, and you almost, you're owning a spot of the city, I guess, emotionally, if you will, that's kind of what I thought, and then the charity's just, you know, an added benefit.
What if we, council, here's just a suggestion, what if we, you know, we can't approve it now, but we can approve, and, you know, and we can take a straw poll and say that we do, and we could say that Rotary could work with Councilman Brown to come up with a tasteful plaque, and it, because I'm about the only one pushing back on that, and.
I'm on the sign committee.
You know, you're appointed, yes, I appointed you to the sign committee.
Can you get Kim to help you?
I am in charge of Christmas.
Well, yeah, I have two of them together.
I am not in charge of Christmas parade. I am the council liaison to the Christmas parade committee.
You wanna, okay.
Making a mistake out of it.
Okay, great. You and Robert are appointed to the tree sign committee.
Thank you for volunteering.
I am happy to help, anytime.
Jay is chair.
That's another reason why I was asking, you know, if it's year by year, you know, sometimes the best-laid plans don't seem to turn out over a period of time, you get a lot of blowback. But I think it's a, you know, a pretty darn good idea, just coming off the top of our heads, thinking of what we can think about the negative side of it. I really don't think there is one, assuming it's like a bracelet-style, unobtrusive sign. And do it year by year, and see how it works out.
I agree, thank you.
Yeah, give it a shot, first year for sure. Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have, I guess, six weeks, roughly, so would this be approved next council meeting? Because they would need to have time to sell them.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, I don't see any other reason why I couldn't.
Thank you.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay. All right. Discussion of police resource officers and police department needs. Who's gonna speak to that?
I think Lieutenant Hollinghead and Lieutenant Sledge. Okay. You want to, I'm gonna have to get an extra seat. Okay.
Hello?
Hello, good afternoon.
Sledge, how you doing?
Doing good.
Larry.
I know, I like that. I like, hey Larry, how you doing? Stephanie, good to see you.
Good to see you.
A little more, I can't give them, call me Kevin, so I'll pay 'em back a little bit.
I'm sorry. Well, if you want, I can first kind of, I wanted to do police first, because, let me just get my notes up. Every municipality right now has a lot of needs with personnel in the police department, and hiring these employees is a little bit more time-consuming than a normal hire. And we kind of wanted to get a head start in possibly even approving at least these key employees with their components ahead of the passing of the budget, so we could get a jumpstart on what I feel like we're all gonna be, you know, pulling out of the same pool of people for, for all the municipalities. And I think it would give us an advantage if we tried to do this earlier than the passing of the budget. We're losing three people, and so those positions are gonna be posted. And then, of course, we have the additional people in the budget that we're gonna go over right now, in addition to the rest of the budget. So if, if you want to go to, I guess, the budget for police. Is this one department or the other? The same thing. What is that? Okay, that's one. The original budget that you received on August 10th, the original draft budget, there are changes to this one, it actually just made it look better. The edits for this budget, I'm gonna pass out when I talk about some of the other things, but for now, you'll just go to the page for police department. Oh, okay. You have a question?
I don't know if they printed on the backside.
We didn't, I don't, I guess we didn't print on the backside.
Page fifteen.
Would it be fifteen, though?
I don't know why that's under there.
The new revision.
Oh, I think.
There's eleven on the first and fifteen.
Yeah, it's the same, I think these are just changes.
I don't know, it's page four.
Yes, please. Okay. I know that the personnel is an exercise, correct? Okay. Yeah. Okay. I'm gonna get into, what we're gonna do with the budgeted schedule is just do departments right now, and then I was gonna do an overview of, of the whole budget, but wanted to give y'all at least something to look at. There's some things in here that are gonna take longer to communicate than probably what we allocated today for the police department. But the salaries, if that's, if you're at the top of the police department, this includes nine new positions, one promotion, in addition to the merit increase, which, again, is another, you know, conversation that, that we really want to have right this very second, but that's why it jumps so much, because the merit increases are in here, and we can communicate that on another time. So you've got the salaries, proposed salaries, and that's for the full year. We're not gonna hire all of these people at the same time, so that will be the highest that it'll, it will be. You can kind of see, when you look at the projected 2018 salary and the actual, well, the projected is the actual, and then the budget for 2018, that it came in lower, and it is because the hires don't all happen at the same time. So this budget will include what I think is probably an overage in every department for salaries. And you have your overtime, which overtime, there's, there's scheduled for overtime. There's things that we just can't avoid due to their 12-hour shift and events and things like that, so. What we did in budget, when you look at budget 2018 and you see that amount for $50,000, that is because on-call was not put in there. On-call is something we cannot, not have. So the projected budget for 2018, that's why it was over. We don't project that overtime to be any different in 2019. And then, of course, you've got payroll, retirement, medical insurance, all that goes up accordingly.
We, I mean, we didn't decrease that $33,000 yet for RSA.
We did get some actual figures that we were projecting when you got your original draft, and one of them is that RSA will be reduced by $33,000. It's not in here.
For all departments.
All departments. The overall insurance, health insurance, went down slightly. I mean, it's about the same, but it did go down slightly. But then, when you look at the departments for health benefits, what you'll see is some of them will be higher than the year before, and some of them will be lower. The overall amount has been decreased. What we kind of drilled down more is we're, we're putting in whether or not an employee has family insurance rather than single insurance, instead of dividing it all up by one amount per employee. So that's the difference you'll see there. Training is gonna be about the same. Professional contracts, again, about the same. Office supplies, there's a lot that goes into office supplies, and we can give, I guess, the, the details of that. Is that in worksheets, I guess? We'll come back to that. Office supplies, there's an increase due to $7,000 for worn-out dispatch and correction administrative chairs. These are actually significant chairs that I learned, based on y'all's description. I mean, they're, they're expensive.
About $1,200 apiece.
General supplies, those two items, we can go into more detail, because a lot goes into general supplies and the computer expense. I'm looking at things that are different than the previous years. The telephone is an expense that we are now getting actual paid by each department, and so you looked at before, like in 2016, you know, these were lower figures, because this includes radios, phones, cells, it's actual expense per department, instead of a percentage going to each department. So that's why that's different. The car purchase amount is going up for the new hires. The corrections capital improvements, which will be on the capital improvements page, is, we can go over that. Getting new jail doors, which has been put off. How many are those?
Ma'am.
How many? Five?
All of them.
Five?
It was determined when the building was built, ma'am, that it wasn't a port, well, it was a poor grade of steel. I'll just put it like that, after the guy, we've had two or three contractors come out, and they looked at the doors, and all the doors pretty much need replacing on the exterior of the building.
Okay. So if you go to capital projects, I'm not sure what page that is.
Capital improvement thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Well, is it the same as capital project? Capital purchases. And then go for police. I'm looking at, in the computer, at a different. Okay. We have, under police department, we have three patrol vehicles with the equipment painting. What we're gonna do is that white little block that's painted, it's, I'm not sure if it's a decal, I think it's painted, though, on the police cars.
It's a wrap.
It's a wrap.
Mm-hmm.
Which one? Lieutenant Hamrick suggested that we just keep them black, because it's an additional expense to get that on, and it's also affects the resale value. We're gonna be able to pay for $100,000 using impact fees to offset this. And then three patrol vehicles for the, we're not actually getting three, it's gonna be one, and then we're gonna use two vehicles that we already have for the three resource officers. Now, on the resource officers, I think it still needs to be approved, but what is likely gonna happen is the resource officers will be reimbursed by county or the schools, $50,000, up to $50,000 each, but will be responsible for their benefits, insurance, and the components, like the car and things like that.
All their equipment.
All of their uniforms, yeah.
Does everybody understand that completely? When the county says they're providing school resource officers to every school, they're providing up to $50,000 to pay their salary.
But all of that is in the budget, just not the salaries, which we'll get to on the personnel page. And so AC units, the in-car video system, and y'all can just tell me if there's anything in here that you have a question on. Active shooter kits. We absolutely need secured storage room for the ammunition with climate control. IT cradle and upgrades. And then Jeff said that he would explain the handheld radios, unless y'all know about that.
That's just gonna be getting additional handheld radios, mobile radios in the vehicles. We don't have mobile radios in all of our vehicles yet.
So this is to get all of them?
Mm-hmm. That is.
How many does that purchase? How much does $65,000 buy?
I'm not sure.
We got twelve.
We've got four.
Four, you mean.
Five. It'll be command. I would think roughly ten?
Ten, eleven, eleven max, so far. But he may have included, did he include those in the new purchase of the other vehicles that we're supposed to be getting to?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll be a total.
So there'll be an additional three?
Yeah, right.
Or about thirteen?
But we already currently have five, maybe, five or six, maybe, with, with them not in it, because mine doesn't have one in it.
Yeah, it doesn't cover command staff, it doesn't cover the.
Right.
Well, I mean, this also, this radio, it prevents y'all from using two different, and it's actually a liability right now, not having it so that it's compatible with, with everybody. Jeff, is Jeff here, or somebody else doing our live streaming right now? If you're here, Jeff, if you can come and explain that part, we'll go on to the next. The speed trailer has been broken, so we do need that replaced in addition to a message cord. Thank you, Jeff. You can explain the, the radios better than I can. It's the $65,000 handheld radios and mobile radios, or mobile radios. Was that something you put in there?
I wonder if that was a carryover from last year.
Okay, then that's gonna be additional radios for new employees.
DJ.
And then also, and then also, it's gonna be the mobile radios in the vehicles that do not have it.
Thanks. Okay.
So a combination of handheld.
You can see on the bottom, and we did this for each department, but the rollover that has not been purchased from 2018, in this case, it was $95,500.
Mayor, I had a question about the rollover, just for clarification.
Yes.
So these items, they've rolled over from the 18 budget. If I go back to page fifteen, and I'm looking at the department request for 2019 and the projected for 2018, is that, for example, out of the police department, that $95,500 in fiscal year 2018 rollover, has that been left in the projected 18?
I'll tell you, the, what the above title, it says, the 2019 request, those are new for this budget. The 2018 was cut from the last budget, so it wasn't in 2018 budget. The 2018 approved but not yet purchased is the amount that's rolled over. So in other words, it was in last year's budget and approved but not acquired yet, so we're just rolling it over to 2019.
Right, but I guess what I'm just trying to clarify, or verify, is that the budget amount for 2018, when you project, the projected 2018, does not necessarily include that $95,000 rollover that's in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And then that doesn't, all right.
Mayor, I'd like to go back to the, to the salaries.
Okay, that's another, let me get to it.
Okay.
The personnel.
Personnel.
No way.
I didn't reprint that.
Okay, just, just new positions for police.
Police, go to your, state staff.
Okay. Is this the one you're talking about that she, that she printed out today?
Where's that number? Which number?
I just did.
What, the 11th?
I know, good.
That's what she's submitting, this amount, minus her cuts.
And you might, you might be able to answer this without, without the details. So the nine new positions, I noticed in the, so let me skip forward. I noticed in retirement.
when you project, the projected 2018, does not necessarily include that ninety-five thousand rollover that's in the budget?
Correct.
Okay. And then that doesn't, alright.
Mayor, I'd like to go back to the, to the salaries.
Okay, that's another, let me get to it.
Okay.
The personnel. No way.
I didn't reprint that.
Okay, just, just new positions for police.
Police, go to your, standing staff.
Okay. Is this the one you're coming up with that you printed out today?
Where's that number?
Which number?
I just did.
What, the one that's four?
That's what she's submitting, this amount minus her cuts.
And you might, you might be able to answer this without, without the details. So the nine new positions, I noticed in the, so let me skip forward. I noticed in retirement expense and medical insurance and.
Are you on the, you're on the budget page for police?
Yeah, I'm on the budget page, I'm back on page fifteen. So it looks like those additional expenses for the three new SROs are included in that. If there is.
It's not.
It's not included?
No, not the salaries, but the benefits.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's included in the benefits, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's not included in the salaries then, so it would be whatever amounts over and above the fifty thousand that they would be paid.
That is included in there.
Is excluded.
No, the benefits.
It is included in nine positions, okay, that was my question.
Oh, well, they're all included, all, all new positions are included in this budget. But the, and the, the three school resource officers are also included.
Included, just some amount, it's some small amount.
Every department for new positions, everything in here is in the budget.
Okay, so then if you take the three school resource officers out, you're proposing six new positions, not inclusive. You said we had three openings, so we actually need to hire.
Three openings are not, I mean, that's already in the budget, cause all we're doing is replacing. A lot of times, less than what you have in there, but that is in the budget.
Understood. So my question was gonna be, so we actually have not, twelve positions that we need to fill, if you count nine new positions and the three vacancies. Okay, so if you take the nine new positions, three of those are school resource officers.
Correct.
And then six positions are, what are they?
They are.
Patrolmen type positions?
Well, there's three, three officers. And then one only if we get another, you know, precinct, which we do need, and so that wouldn't affect the whole year, but a secretary receptionist, a captain, dispatch supervisor, and event logistics, which we kinda already have, but we're just giving her a pay grade that is more conducive with what she's doing. So it gives her a little bit of growth opportunity.
I'd be lying if I didn't say a million dollar increase over last year's budget, you know, seventeen percent, roughly sixteen, seventeen percent. Does that not jump off the page of anybody?
It does, I guess another question I've asked Mike, I don't know if he has a data yet, but trying to figure out in all the departments, you know, how many positions are unfilled from last year?
Not many, very few.
Very few.
Very few. And like the ones that, you know, I said for the three officers, I mean, some of them haven't left yet, so, but we're putting them out ahead of time. If we know ahead of time, we'll put the position online.
We're currently down three officers that we're replacing, and we're in the process of the hiring process right now to replace those three.
I thought one of them was, anyway, that hasn't, that we were going to lose three, but they're all gone now?
But we haven't, I'm not sure the.
Okay, cause the ones that.
The ones that we're, that we're leaving have left.
Okay, so when they originally communicated, they hadn't left yet?
Yeah.
If we were to approve, if we were to come in and pass a resolution to fund the school resource officers next meeting, what's the soonest we could have them in our schools? Would it occur this semester, next semester maybe? And then would the county prorate the amount of money that they give us? And I understand they're paying that fifty thousand over twelve months, cause they understand that, you know, there's gonna be some time out of the year that we're gonna put them on the street or do, put them in the office doing other police work when school's not in session.
That would be safe to say that.
It would be prorating?
That's what I was thinking, yes.
That would be safe.
So how, how soon could we get these resource officers into school?
I'm thinking maybe by the second semester.
Maybe by January?
That's kinda what I was hoping for.
Well, Mayor makes a good point about this, you know, pool of talent that, that, you know, is out there, that everybody may be going after these same individuals, I, I don't know.
They will, right. Well, we're having trouble now for that reason.
Do we require somebody to have already gone through the academy to hire them?
You can.
Certified wise?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if you guys, somebody who's enthusiastic and ready to go, but they don't have that qualification, could you pay to send them to the academy?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Is there any council member here that?
It's our, are you?
I'm just talking in general.
Oh, okay.
Just in general, okay.
And that's what we're planning for.
I kinda wanna ask the council, what are we, what are we thinking about school, school resource officers? Is there anybody that wants to turn down that money and not put one in the school? I don't know that that'd be a wise, no, but I guess I would ask. Be afraid to say it if I thought it, but are we all wanting that? Because I think that's something that we could push forward immediately, and, and probably should have done it, you know, a month ago.
Where were you seeing the million dollar difference?
I was looking at the department request of 2019, the six point nine five million versus.
Oh, I thought you said personnel.
No, no, total, total.
Right, right.
So I would ask that we, I would ask council to take whatever measures necessary to approve those, even if we're not ready to approve the Police Department budget at the next meeting, if we're not ready to approve the overall budget at the next meeting, we should darn well be ready to approve the school resource officers at the next meeting.
Well, I think the officers too, because this, this is a situation where we have been understaffed, and it's gonna take, you know, even the new people, the three people that are coming in are gonna be new. We're losing a lot of history, I guess.
I have a lot of studying to do on that, my, this personally, me. Now, there may be four other council members that are ready to pass the police budget tonight, I don't know. Me personally, I'm ready to pass school resource officers, and I may or may not be ready for the rest of this in two weeks. I just can't say, but to me, the school resource officer is a no-brainer. Budget aside, we need to get that done.
We, I don't know that it's been approved yet by the county.
Well, we could say in lieu of them approving it, then we could approve it, and then when it's done, it's a done deal. Everybody, would everybody be okay with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think we should get something on the next meeting, at a minimum, I'm just saying at a minimum, to move forward with that. And then we'll, and this helps, doing this piecemeal, we can break it down, and when I say piecemeal, the department, the Police Department, we can focus on it right now.
Right, I mean, it's all of them, I mean, this was an important.
I'll shut up now and let y'all go ahead.
This is an important one just because it is kind of a significant increase. But the reality is that, you know, we do have to look at this police jurisdiction and staff it accordingly. And stating that we've never had an issue before, do we wanna wait until there's an issue? Because we have thirty-five sworn officers right now for a population of almost thirty-three thousand, and it's, what, sixty-eight square miles?
Eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight. So, I mean, you know, we don't have to drastically take it down to the, to the city limits, but you definitely need to put a plan in place for the next four years, because public safety is involved, and that this is a lot for five officers to patrol. And it's, you know, especially when you, I think that people inside the city limits are kinda losing out right now because of this huge jurisdiction. And I think just maybe even considering coming in one point five mile within a certain period, so it's communicated with the county and it's a smooth transition. It's, we have to do it financially and because it's just a huge area to patrol. To beef it up to what we need it to be for this amount of area and this population, it's far more than what we're asking for in this budget.
Council, y'all have any questions about what's been presented so far?
Just so I make sure I'm reading it right, so we've got department request for salaries is three point seven nine compared to the budget of eighteen, which is three point three five seven. That three point seven nine one is before the hundred thousand dollar credit from the school, is that right?
Yes.
So that's, that's really three point six nine.
Correct.
There are money, alright, so that's, that's a three hundred and, just so my notes are right, three hundred and thirty-four thousand increase over in salaries from last year. And that, but that fills not.
That'd be nine.
Six plus school resource?
Yeah, and the school resource officer, depending on what they make, is gonna be, you know, a small amount. It looks like they put the net in there on top of the salary, so if you're getting fifty and they were making, you know, if they started fifty-four, then they probably put four in there on the salary.
We didn't put a salary in there.
Yeah, they started.
I thought you said that you did include the difference.
No, the, the school resource officer's salary is not in there, only the expense for health.
Anything above fifty thousand.
Benefits and the components.
I thought, I thought a while ago you'd said.
No, that, that hundred thousand is actually, it's fifty thousand offset for the high school and middle school.
I understand that.
We already have those on.
I thought you said that you put the difference in.
Oh, no, no, that, that hundred thousand is the credit for the middle school and high school, which we already have.
I'm not misunderstanding that, I'm, I'm only talking about the three point seven nine one. I thought that it included.
No, no.
Any overage over and above the fifty thousand, we would have to pay them.
But that's included down below in employee payroll taxes, retirement, medical insurance.
But the salary, if they make fifty-five thousand dollars, there's not five thousand in that top line.
There's fifty-five thousand in the top line, and then there's a hundred thousand dollar credit applied to it, so it's loose.
No, for the resource officer, I'm talking just those three resource officers. That expense starts on employee payroll taxes. So it's four lines down, that's where it's included, that, the retirement, medical, you know, all of that.
None of them included in the top line then?
So that salary up there, it would be net, because if we're gonna get reimbursed up to fifty thousand, we're gonna hire three more that, we're not gonna hire them in over fifty thousand.
Okay, well, that answers that bit, okay. My, my understanding was that if it was gonna be something over fifty, then the overage was already in there. But if they're not gonna be over fifty, then it's a wash and.
Correct. The reason there's a deduction is for the current ones we have.
That wasn't even, that wasn't, that was understood.
Right, I was just for clarification.
And in fact, it will be, well, it'll be a net zero roughly. Okay, any, anybody else have any questions on this? What other department are we gonna be covering, just such departments?
Public Works, it's really the two biggest ones with probably the, the most expenses. Cause it's a lot of, well, I mean, it's still, let me tell you, this budget, the final number is, we're using significantly less, about half of, for transfers from utilities, and we're paying all of our operating. It's the most solid budget we've ever had. And that's including a bunch of things that need to be done, so. Did you have any more questions for the lieutenants?
Anybody?
We're gonna go over everything again as a whole.
Be looking to start cutting somewhere. Thank you for your list.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Mr. Johnson.
Hello. And just, you know this, but just kinda for the audience, the components of Public Works, you have a section for fleet maintenance, a section that is called construction and facility maintenance, and you have a section called sanitation, and you have a section called streets. And would you prefer to start with one of the smaller departments, or your preference? Mr. President, we'll, we'll go whichever way you want.
Let's go ahead and start with the smaller, give me a page number.
Let's go to page twenty-six, that would be fleet maintenance, and it's pretty straightforward. Page twenty-six on mine.
Okay, um, this is a new one, yeah, twenty-seven on, no, actually, it is page twenty thirty.
Did we say streets?
No, fleet maintenance.
Fleet.
Fleet maintenance, the thirty, thirty-three yards package. Council, the, the biggest indicator here that's, 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 in this budget is there is a request before you in salaries for an additional mechanic position, and I was just trying to get with Leslie and verify what that, that pay range, I think what we use as the placeholder is the midpoint, that doesn't mean we're gonna hire that, at that point, but I believe that's about a twenty-five dollar an hour position at the midpoint, which makes that number sound about right, cause that's about a fifty-two thousand dollar increase. And then, of course, you see those things that, that are directly related to salaries, that are dictated by the salaries paid. And probably the biggest change is that you see in, we kept Jill here, but there are some things that we're not accounting for in the budget in past years that now are being purposely dictated, so you see what those true costs are. We do have a request for overtime. I think the, I think that there is an option or an ability to reduce that number significantly if the position is granted. This past year, we've had, and let's just say, individuals that have had on, on leave where they're not available to us, but we're not, we're not available to have a temp hired or anything of that nature, so we still had to do the same amount of work with, with a person down for a good part of the year, and that was a driver of overtime. And, you know, that's, that's a tough decision that we have to do, but an example is if, if a mechanic can stay two hours late and get a garbage truck fixed that keeps a crew from being four hours late the next day, it, it is a, it is a calculus that you do and do there. As far as any other really in the operational request changes, we do have fifteen hundred dollars requested in training in school. We would like to get some of our mechanic certifications updated. We have some designated computer expenses. The biggest thing is, is the, the equipment that we're buying, whether it be Freightliner or International or whatever, they've gotten very good about having to upgrade the software to be able to plug into the truck, to get codes and find out what's going on to be able to plan for repair, and that's included there. You know, your general supplies, Jill, that kinda covers oil, grease, filters, all those things that are just part of the normal fleet maintenance. And as you look across those numbers, that we've actually been in a downward trend. I think we've been a little bit more cost-effective, but we did keep that, that placeholder, looking at what sixteen actual and seventeen actual was, to, to stay in that, that range. But we're hoping that newer equipment is driving those, those costs down, and that trend will stay there. Again, no, general maintenance is those things that we have to spend money to maintain that facility. This past year, we did replace concrete on the aprons and do some other repairs, and the supervisor identified that there's some still work to be done. Phones pretty much consistent, you know, gas and oil, that is, that now with the, with the tracking system, we're knowing exactly what fuel is put in what vehicle and used, and, and that, that number has a small inflationary rate there, because when we were making this budget, gas prices were creeping up, so that was the controlling there. Again, the vehicle, equipment and repair, this is actually the vehicles that are possessed, and equipment possessed by the, the shop itself, and just kinda trending with what we've seen this past year. Throughout Public Works, you're gonna see uniform numbers, and when you look at the year before, you're gonna see either zero or no numbers. We tend to replace uniforms on every other year cycle, so we really gotta look back two years and see where we are there. And then, again, in the capital purchase and, and vehicle equipment, we are needing a service truck, as well as we are needing to insulate the ceiling, which we deferred that money to the PD project and the Public Works utility building project this year, as well as, I forget what the third was.
Your capital purchases are on forty-two, can I flip over there?
Do you wanna go through all of these?
I wanna, I wanna kinda slow y'all down a little bit.
Okay.
This is probably the smallest department in the whole city, and we're spending a lot of time talking about two thousand and three thousand, we're probably a point oh 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 percent of the budget.
Okay.
And this is, we're not interested in that, we'll look at that. Here's what I, this, this comes down to this. The difference is about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but I believe a lot of that might just be due to reclassification of expenses, Jill.
Yes.
So it's because everything else is real close.
Pretty steady, yes.
You have one, one employee that's, you know, that, that's easy to see the difference in the, in the price there, but then if you look over there from employee payroll taxes down to casualty insurance, that's where the majority of all the other increases come from, and I think that's just reclassifying expenses probably, is that right?
Right.
And most all of these have detailed notes to the right. And if you start up, I mean, this department is actually really big, it's just, you're talking about mechanic, I guess. But we've got streets, sanitation, I mean, is that what, y'all would go through all that? I would just touch on the things that are changing.
You know, I did, you know, and this is such, this is just so small, but it's a hundred percent increase. You know, you talk, you touched on fuel, and fuel prices have creeped up, but our fuel is projected to be double what it was in twenty-seventeen.
In which department?
In this fleet maintenance.
Yeah.
From two thousand to forty-one hundred.
And, and I think that's the challenge, is with the Fuel Master system, and now that every vehicle has a tracking key that goes with it, that, that I don't have a high value of trust in the two thousand and seventeen number, okay? That, that is the, I do have a high value of trust in projected twenty-eighteen, cause we've been under Fuel Master the whole budgetary. That is the, I do have a high value of trust in projected 2018, because we've been under Fuel Master the whole budgetary period. So we now are getting real, real accurate information of what fuel goes in what vehicle because of the coding and everything else.
If every single department in the city goes up by 100%, that's gonna be a real red flag right there.
I think so. I hope somebody's gone down somewhere.
I hope somebody's gone down.
It went up from 2017 to 18. The 2019 is about the same budget.
And I think probably utility was buying a lot of fuel for other departments, you know, prior to having this system in place. That is my suspicion, but, again, the only reason that we upped that number a little bit was that gas prices were trending up, and we were basing it on actuals from...
Yeah, the one from last year to this, projected 28 to the request didn't raise a flag. It was 2017 to 2018, which is what threw that flag up. But anyway, we don't wanna dwell on that small number right now. Do y'all have any questions about fleet maintenance right now? Twenty, you know, capital upgrades and purchases was 22,000. You said you needed a vehicle, so I'm guessing that was most of that.
Yes, sir. And if you'll go one page back to 29, you'll see construction, utility, maintenance. I will not read you line by line. Again, the big driver here that's being requested is an addition of two people, meaning another maintenance team. And if that maintenance team is granted, it is dictating all of your additional costs, because that capital purchase is the truck for those two texts to work out of. And so, everything else is pretty much, would be in line there, except for, you know, those increases would be tied to adding those two new maintenance people to do that. And I'll be glad offline to discuss any specifics of that. And we did put in professional service, because what we are finding is that when we need to have a roof consultant do a specification for a roof system or repair, to have a placeholder for that type of service in building maintenance would be a good thing.
So a lot of the public works items, you will spread them across various departments of public works and utilities, or like if you're purchasing a new truck, that's what, which is fleet maintenance pays a portion, then each of the utilities pays a portion?
That's correct. Jill and the mayor have worked on a matrix of how that cost is shared, and...
Are you talking about maintenance?
I was looking at capital purchases.
Yes.
There's some capital purchases, now, the vehicles go to that department. But there's some capital purchases that are shared expenses.
Right, that's what I'm looking at. These are, that are shared among five different departments.
That's correct. Because the thought process is that fleet maintenance and facility maintenance services the city, and the utilities is a big portion of that customer, you know, that part of the city. So that is, there's a matrix there that kinda breaks that.
The formula that determines what that is.
How we get to that point, sir.
I, too, also.
How many new people would you say in that department is being charged?
Right now, we have three budgeted positions, and then we basically share a position out of utilities, I believe it's out of electric part. So that gives us a total of four people in building maintenance, and we'd like to go to a total of six. But only five would be budgeted out of this, Jill, because one is paid through utilities. That's correct, right?
So how many new is that?
Conrad, or who?
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, he, even though he does electrical work, he comes and helps with electricals.
And this really is just slowly building a department that really was non-existent before. And I'd pointed out that, you know, we don't have a building maintenance department. We own a lot of buildings, over 100 buildings. And we spend about a million dollars a year in maintenance for equipment and things that have a depreciating value. Our assets for buildings, I mean, these are appreciating assets that have been neglected. They all have serious maintenance issues. I mean, we're really not at a maintaining position. We're replacing on emergency basis. So it really is, what we invest in this department will save long-term. So they're able to do more proactive things rather than reactionary.
And if you'd like to go to page 28, that's your sanitation. Now we're getting into probably...
Anybody have any questions about that construction and facilities maintenance right now?
Just to remind you and say thank you, as you know, that leading in the budget process last year, y'all did approve a slight increase in sanitation fees that would increase a total of $3 over three budget years. So on October 1, that is built into this. And so, we feel very strong that we're conservative in that income number, because the one thing that we, we know we're at about a 4% growth rate, but we're basing it on how many customers we end this budget year with, and multiplying that by the fee. And we know that that's gonna continue to grow every month, so, but we wanted to be conservative there. Again, we were very realistic on the sale, and it really shouldn't say just recycle. It should just say sale of recyclables.
I wanna mention, too, that the budget included, when you look at the budget 2018, it included the $3. We didn't lower it after just $1 was approved. So that's why that was missed.
So, you know, that's your income side. I think we're conservative there, which is always a good thing to be. And then we get to the expense side. And as I know, y'all remember, we kinda had a little workshop talking about wanting to move away from the inmate program and go to hopper positions. That, salaries do show that change. And Jill would have to tell us where we would have the savings in eliminating the inmates. That's through another fund that's paid out, so...
Right. And there were two or three different departments that had an inmate expense added in in prior years.
In addition, where are the inmates picked up?
Well, we pick them up in Locksley every morning and take them back.
Every day, and then drop them back off. I mean, there's a lot of expenses that go with that. And then also consistency, because the liability is, you never know what you're gonna get when you pull up.
So the salary figure includes three sanitation hopper, which y'all should have received the job description.
And Jill, the one thing that I'm not verified is the telephone. I'm not sure that's correct.
Includes cell phone service.
Yeah, it should be about 1,100. That's a lot of minutes.
I'll highlight it.
So I did wanna check. I think that's an outlier there.
These came from Jeff put together, telephone, computer, and all those expenses. More than likely, it's a share of the phone system, too, but we can get to details.
Okay, so that, okay, that doesn't, so that's the centralized phone system. Okay, very good then. That was the one, I thought that, if that was for a cell phone, that was too much. Again, most of the numbers are in line. You see that uniforms do spike up. You know, the last big expenditure of uniforms was 2017, with some supplemental. And, you know, we have a good deal of turnover and a lot of wear and tear. So we always have a yearly uniform expense, but we really need to have a wholesale change out. And that is what we have projected to uniform the staff. As you know, here at City of Fairhope, individuals take their uniform home. They have to launder and take care of them and things of that nature. This is not a service. This is a, we purchase and provide, and if they tear it or wear it out or whatever, we will work to replace it or get it mended. Again, landfill charges are really based upon growth rate. I don't know if that's probably a little bit high, but I would rather predict it to be high than to be low.
But we are enforcing that now.
We do have some maintenance of our landfill that we need to deal with. And one is, we've got to do some on our gas monitoring wells, which is in our landfill vents, as well as we've got to spend some money on a transfer station this next year. It's time for some serious maintenance there. We've just done a recent repatch job on it, but the cantilever slab where we push over has got some structural deficiencies. It's gonna have to be rebuilt. And we plan to do that in-house. The biggest thing is, we really wanna look at, and this is a big wish list item. We really would like to be able to provide new customers recycle bins as part of their coming to the city and instigating their services, and have an ability for existing customers, if they want a uniform bin, a way to purchase those at cost or whatever. And even though the 16-gallon bins run about $8 apiece, you have to order them in a certain quantity. That is pretty high. They wanna sell you by the truckload to get that price. And then, of course, included in that number is that cost that we have to provide not only new garbage carts for new customers, but replacement cart for those that are damaged and worn out in a given year. But the big part of that 124,000 is a recycle bin program. The biggest thing that I see as an advantage is when a customer comes in to initiate, a new customer comes in to initiate their service, we introduce them to their bins, and we, you know, we kinda inform them that garbage goes in here, and this is what garbage is, and it goes out on this day. Here's your recycle bins. This is what you put in it, and you put it out. And you kinda don't really explain to them that recycle is optional. You're trying to, you know, kinda get a good habit going and things of that nature. And this was a recommendation that has come out of the recycle committee, that they would like to have a bin program that we could institute, so...
I don't think this figure includes what we had talked about, because we came up with several different scenarios, but charging a deposit for the initial can and giving the recycle bins for free, because that's not very much of an expense. But you would be recouping, I mean, if you turn in the garbage can, which is likely not to happen, that's the expense, and we're not charging it right now. So have a deposit for the initial can, and this figure will probably be less than the previous year.
Just so you know, on a 64 to 96 gallon, I think the 64 probably, for the garbage cart itself, the big one, 96, I think we, our cost is about $65 a cart, and probably maybe $8 or $9 cheaper for the little mid-sized cart. And, you know, when you really think about a new customer, at even $14.80 a month, it takes a while to recover the initial cost of the cart.
I think that they can pay for that can, and if you, the cost of the recycle bins is what, $20?
No, eight. That was...
Two, right?
For two, it would be 16, yes ma'am, yeah.
Okay, so 16. So give that at no charge, and then just a deposit for the cost of the can. And that figure should be lower than...
Oh, yes, that would...
The previous year.
Yeah, because it would...
And fair, because it's not, I mean, we charge so little for garbage.
Just, you know, to give you an example, if $44,000, what we spent last year on new carts for new customers, as well as replacement carts, if we were getting a deposit equal to that new cart as part of their startup, then that number would be supplemented by income. I would say probably 80% of that number was new customers, where the rest was repair and replacements, so...
And they're paying for the cost when they're getting a new one, or getting a replacement, anyway.
But we're looking at still $80,000 on recycling bins.
It would be reimbursed. I think this number would be less than the previous expenses, 44,000.
Right. But if that 44 was paid by the customer to purchase the bin, the full bin, subtract that from the 124, and you get close to $80,000 for recycling.
No, it's not. It's, I think that includes all of that without a deposit, and then all of the recycled.
Well, I'll get, I'll get, I know Dale got the final numbers.
Man, I'm all about recycling, but spend $80,000 on bins to get, to give people that probably aren't gonna recycle, otherwise they've been recycling anyway.
The recycle bins are 16, as opposed to...
Well, and that's the challenge, because the $8 bins come with a hook, and there was a minimum order, and it was in the thousands. But it's a durable good that we've got room in the store of the pecan, so it would be something that we wouldn't probably have to buy any recycle bins for several, several years. That is, but because, I wanna say, the next quantity, those bins almost doubled in price, like $14, $15 as opposed to $8. And I will get you those numbers and get that clarified.
I think there was only like $15,000.
I'll have to go back and look. Dale pulled all that information. I didn't bring it with me tonight, so...
So you're saying two bins per customer? So they're separating, what, paper and plastic now?
Glass and everything else.
Are we still co-mingle? Where are we at on that?
It's glass and then everything else.
Yeah, bin for glass and a bin for all other recyclables. Because, you know, how we're collecting is we have the bins on the side of the truck for the glass to go in, and then everything else goes into the hopper as it is. It's still a modified sort, but it's not as involved. Because right now, our buyer is taking a clean stream, less glass, so...
Okay. I'm not sure if this is the most updated one, but it was 4,000, and it's 30,000. So...
We'll get that number looked at.
I think it's gonna be about the same.
Questions about sanitation, Counsel?
I guess on capital purchases, you, they seem to alternate year by year as far as expenses. About $650,000 last year, and what we actually spent, and only about 40 this year. And then back in 17, it was 20,000. The year before was 330. So I guess that's sort of the normal course of business. Every other year, you've got major replacement. Towards the bottom of page 20, well, my page 28. I don't know what page it is for you.
And I'm gonna have to go and...
Well, look that note on my, too. Did you see that note?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because we...
Some of that was unpaid. It was paid for 2017.
You have to look at those columns for acquisitions.
I think it's great if you only need $47,000 worth of...
That's on page 41, if you want to do the other one.
We got all new Robert's trucks last year. Maybe not all of them, but...
You know, I'm, we're gonna have to get, look at this, Jill, because I don't, like, for example, I mean, we are requesting a loader for the transfer station, but it's not showing up in a... Where is that 170 purchase, 60 for lease at?
Being capital purchases.
That's what we're looking at. Capital purchases have got a big blank section.
Some sort of column that got hidden easily.
Because we are requesting a, to continue on with the leases, and add another Freightliner auto loader, and as well as another Knuckle Boom truck. This is sanitation.
Page 41.
And also looking for the, we need a new loader for the transfer station, so...
So that number's not 47?
No, I don't think that's correct, because it just picked up the F-150 and the double-walled tanks for ADM.
Is that the, that's the old one that they received?
Okay.
I'm looking at the screen here. There's notes.
Yeah, man, it's got the description of the notes about the purchase of the lease. It's not calculated.
But it's not got a number?
I'm gonna have to look at that. I had somebody else type this, and I got it.
The notes help.
Go back.
Pizza together with those notes for now. The notes are pretty helpful, man. Any other questions about sanitation?
And then the last, and under public work, everybody does know that, streets, drainage, as well as horticulture, which takes care of the grounds, the flowers, and mowing and things of that nature.
What things is that on?
I think that would be like 27,000. Again, we are asking for three new positions.
The first payment didn't start 2020, that's why.
Well, great. So we have rollover money, so we, all right, we'll...
That's correct, right? Those leases will not, the first payment will not start until 2020.
On any of those items?
Right.
So we'll be able to buy new this year? So we'll be able to buy a new this year and with last year's money?
Buy a new this year, we're twenty-twenty's in money.
You leased last year, so those payments are due this year during the budget.
Well, and you know the economy good, is good when it's, it takes nine months to get a new truck delivered. So, I mean, we, we have the, you know, the trucks that, the, the Knuckle Boom and the Auto Loader that was budgeted last year was ordered as promptly as we could and we are hoping for a January, February delivery. So that's, manufacturers are, got demand for their product right now, so.
I thought that was too many files to have zeros, but I knew something was going on with that.
Again, in, in the streets and horticulture budget, there are requests for additional personnel, both in streets and in horticulture. Again, it's, you know, supervisors have been identified, just a need for that support. These are frontline folks delivering services. Pretty much, you can look down and, and kind of track those things that, that we have in there. And we did, we did bump up the professional service and identified some of the reasons for that. And there is a, a big jump in the computer expense, because in the capital projects, we are asking for a sign printer and this would be a one-time expense to buy the software that would run that. And we would start manufacturing the majority of our signs in-house, especially the street signs and things of that nature. A pretty big change in flowers and part of that is finally running a full cycle and, and seeing what the real costs are, since it used to just be in landscape and street supplies, so we, we didn't really have a good gauge. And Mike can explain this, because of when we have to order flowers for the next change out, we do get, we do have to spend money, at least when we encumber it in a purchase requisition, that really is not going to be spent the next fiscal year, but we had to adjust the budget, so that money is there. So hopefully after we get a couple of years into this, we'll, it will really normalize that number and know what that, that cost is. Again, we've asked to keep a placeholder, fifty thousand dollars for sidewalk repair, replacement and upgrades. And everything else is pretty straightforward there, that you see in there. And then in the.
I'm looking at page forty-one.
You can kind of go through and see these items, but I do want to point out that the, the, the big ticket that we would like to have a conversation with is, is actually for the city and we're willing to kind of be the, the leading this to, since utility, we send to share with them all the time. But to look at, at least leasing to purchase a Caterpillar excavator or an excavator. Just so far, this year alone, we have rented or leased a Caterpillar for, or, or, or excavator for a pretty long period of time, early in the year. The utility just had to rent one to do the Bayview work and we're getting ready to have to rent another coming up here to, to do some other drainage work as well. And just having that piece of equipment available, yes, it's expensive, there's, but, but having it, I, I think we would effectively be able to do a, do a great deal more in-house, more efficiently, more quickly and that would also benefit utilities too, because they're constantly having to, to do that. And we had a, a Lowboy trailer in there, but when we saw the cost of that and, and that we're so fortunate Tonys will move a piece of heavy equipment for such a nominal price, I think we'd have to move it like a thousand times before we'd cover the cost of the, the Lowboys, so Mayor and I back that out of there as well. So that's kind of that, everything else is pretty much traditional equipment that is wear and tear. You do see the, the sign plotter and cutter, that is a physical machine that will print signs.
Metal signs.
Metal signs, they go on the aluminum blank, but it prints the reflective with the letters and all that on it, so.
Somebody's, I can't pull up the, what else was on the agenda for work session?
No, we're good.
Okay, because I mean, I have some general notes that I was going to do before everything else.
We just had, we had committee updates and department had updates, the council members can give committee updates during their comments if they, if they choose to and this is more important than the other.
I was just going to, just go through these notes real quick.
Anybody have any questions about the, the general public works, streets?
And we will dig into some bins numbers and get that answered. And Dale's done a lot of research and there's been a lot of emails back and forth and I should have brought them with me, because he had, had some updated numbers.
I think we can actually use that figure, but we need to put revenue on the other side that we're being reimbursed for the deposit and then that will net out to the correct amount.
And you know, if anybody has any questions, Mayor and I will be glad to answer them and kind of drill down into this and, and deal with anything that y'all have concerns with.
You got to digest it.
Sure.
Getting you set a red pen and stuff like that?
But I wanted to go over to that, these notes, so y'all can think about this when looking at the budget, not just with these two departments, but with all the departments. Just, you know, kind of where we are since two thousand sixteen. We've increased cash account balances almost fifty percent. They were at twenty-nine million, eight hundred and eighteen thousand and now we are at forty-four million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And that really is because we're stockpiling money and.
Forty what, Mayor?
Forty-four million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. It's an increase of fourteen million, five hundred and fifty thousand in two short years. This budget also, for the first time, has all the funding sources, so, and the, and the actual figures, which I've never been able to get before this year. We've decreased city debt by forty-six percent from six point eight-three million to three point six-eight million. I'll send you those, these notes. Reduced utility debt by twenty-one percent from nineteen point three million to fifteen point three million. The city and utilities, as you know, the, the financials have been separated and this year, you will see for the first time, a full year of the city paying for its own operating expenses, a full year of it. And in addition to that, you'll notice on this budget that we have the least amount ever been transferred from the utility. And, but there's another note that I want to make on the budget. This is basically the front page of, actually, one of them.
We have one out over there.
Yeah, we have.
I might.
When you look at the, we have right now twenty-five percent of our sales tax going to debt reduction for the city and twenty-five percent going to capital purchases?
Projects.
Capital projects. And when we did this budget in two thousand eighteen, we put aside or proposed only putting in a hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-three under transfer for capital projects, that's on the second page. But it was approved for, the ordinance didn't change. And so we took twenty-five percent of the sales tax, one point five eight eight million, and that was again, stockpiled into capital projects. If you took that out, you would, you would notice that we had, we would have had a surplus of over a million and the expenses wouldn't have been as much. So what was approved and what we didn't edit because of an ordinance affected the bottom line here. Also, the twenty-five percent for, of sales tax for city debt, we will not need that for the next two years, it'll be paid off. And so what I'm proposing is just splitting up the additional amount we need to pay off all city debt in two thousand nineteen and in two thousand twenty and will be done. So I do think that that ordinance for both of those needs to be edited. We have to use all city income and revenues for operating expenses. And if we do that, we're not going to require any money from utilities. And then when you get to a point where you're not needing that, the amount of money that you take from utilities can and should always be used for community development and quality of life. And when you get to that point, I think we can do a lot. I just think taking sales tax money to pay off, pay towards things that really are not necessary while taking money from utilities that really needs to go to maintenance, upgrades and things like that. I also typed out what we are, we're basically very, very close for the city being completely self-reliant.
We got about, we got about two minutes.
Okay, I'll just close it with this then. I think when you go through this edited budget, you'll see that it's extremely solid. The city is almost fully self-sufficient, even with taking over all of its operating expenses, increasing personnel needs and reducing utility subsidy. As a result, the net profit for utilities will be at record highs. Profit will be used for utility maintenance upgrades and eventually a percentage to community development. The, the projected profit in utilities, net profit in two thousand nineteen is eight point two million, which is seventy-one percent higher than the utility profit from last term. And that is a hundred and thirty-seven percent higher than the term before this. So we're going to be a lot better financial position, both as a city, which really only needs to break even and the utilities are significantly better, so.
All right, we're adjourned, we'll talk to you later in about five.